Okay, good morning, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and reconvene the Monterey County Board of Supervisors on our public agenda items. Madam Clark, can we get a roll call, please?
Good morning. Let the record reflect, all supervisors are present with Supervisor Parker, Alejo, Phillips, and Adams appearing via video conference, and Chair Supervisor Lopez appearing in person.
Mr. McKee, you mind leading us in the pledge? Announcement of the interpreter, please.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Maria, este aqui para los servicios en trepeta en español.
Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
There is one correction to the general government consent calendar, and that is to move item number twenty-eight, Local Housing Trust Fund and Permanent Local Housing Allocation, from the consent calendar to the one thirty P M scheduled matters as item twelve point one.
Great. Okay, I'll entertain a motion for those changes.
So moved.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that motion, and I wonder if the maker of the motion would allow us to adjourn in memory of Ralph Rubio as well?
That's on the agenda already.
Oh, it is. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you for that, too.
Any public comment on these changes to the agenda? See, nobody coming forward in room. I'm gonna go to the Zoom. And I'll remind the public at this point, if you wish to participate in today's meeting, we ask that you use the raise hand function in the Participants tab, or at the very bottom of your screen, if you're participating via landline or cellphone, star nine will also do the raise hand function and let us know that you wish to be recognized. I see no hands going up on these additions and corrections, so roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Parker?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Lopez?
Aye, the motion carries. Thank you very much. We're gonna head into our consent calendar next, that's items fifteen through twenty-nine. Is there a member of this board who wishes to pull an item from consent? See, no hands going up. I'll turn it and see if there's anybody from the public who'd like to pull an item from consent. See, nobody coming forward in the room, anybody via Zoom? No hands up. We will entertain a motion to move consent.
Moved.
Second.
Second.
Take a motion from Supervisor Adams and a second from Supervisor Alejo. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Parker?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Lopez?
Aye, motion carries. Next, we have our ceremonial resolutions, which are items three through five. Uh, any public comment on our ceremonial resolutions? See, none. I'll bring it back to this board.
Move approval?
Second.
Got a motion from Phillips and a second from Parker. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Parker?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Lopez?
Aye, the motion carries. We'll head into our appointments, which is items six and seven. Any public comment on appointments? See, nobody coming forward in room, anybody via Zoom? No hands up. I'll bring it back to this board.
Still moved?
Approval? Second.
Motion from Adams, second from Parker. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Parker?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Lopez?
Aye, the motion carries. At this point, we're board comments. I'm gonna go in reverse order today by district number, so Supervisor Adams.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I want to give a special shout out of thanks to Elsa Jimenez and Dr. Gary Gray for participating in a fireside chat that we had this past week. It was very well attended and very informational to many people to get to hear from the healthcare professionals that we have in our county. Um, we also want to thank Nativity Medical Center for the pop-up testing site that we had, clearly demonstrating the demand for need on the peninsula for more pop-up sites like that. We were attempting to focus on the hospitality industry, and my hope is that we were successful in that. Um, thank you again. As to another group of folks, life continues to go on, COVID or not, and I want to give a special thanks to the Public Works Department, especially Chief Randy Ishi. They worked with my office to quickly install a new pedestrian crossing sign with the flashing beacons at Hatton Road and Ocean Avenue in the unincorporated area of Carmel. I just really thank them for that. It's an issue regarding the safety of not just kids when the school is in session crossing the street from Carmel High, but for residents who are walking as well, and this will really be a big help for making people feel safer when they cross there. I'm also thankful that there is a newly established community road fund that provides each district with some flexibility to make unplanned but needed road safety improvements. So I continue to look forward to figuring out how to increase the resources available to improve all of our county roads, and I know many of us continue to struggle with that every day. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Supervisor Adams. Supervisor Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone. I just have a couple of quick things. I want to thank Nick Chulos and Nick Pasculi for being my guests on Hot Topics last night, really talking about the many avenues that the county is pursuing to get the messages out to the public about how they can, how we all can take care of ourselves and each other in this time of the virus. Lot of creativity and persistence going into making sure that there are messages in English, in Spanish, and I know that there are some available in some of the indigenous languages as well, just really continuing to communicate to our public because we are all in this together, and when we can follow the protocols, we can slow the transmission of the virus. So, thanks to them for being my guests, and then in addition, we had Superintendent PK Diffenbaugh from Monterey Peninsula Unified School District, and he talked about the thought process and decision-making process that they went through in deciding, setting up plans for the various ways of being able to educate children and keep them and faculty and staff as safe as possible. Clearly, a lot of very important thinking going on. And anyway, it's really complex, and one of the things that I hear again and again is how important this is, and also how challenging, no matter what solution we come up with, that there are gonna be challenges on the kids and on the parents. And the parents are our workforce and our community members, so really thinking again about how important it is to make sure that we have paid sick leave, paid family leave, and healthcare benefits available to all of the people in our community so that as we do the right thing and take care of ourselves and each other and our family members, we don't have to fall further behind economically. So it's really a challenging set of issues, and I just appreciate how, all the creativity that people are showing to help us get through this in the best ways possible. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Parker. Supervisor Phillips?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick, I'd like to thank the Health Department visiting nurses for, and Elsa Jimenez for getting the testing done at Casterville, and we're going again this week. That was very successful. Too successful, we had to turn people away. And starting at the beginning of August, I think we're gonna have a town hall meeting out here in North County. I'll ask Elsa and Charles and some others, but I want, we wanted to wait a little bit until we could also include Curry Jaeger and the Superintendent Schools in North County so we can better inform everybody where we're going with our educational system, starting with the school year, so thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Phillips. Supervisor Alejo?
Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to express some words in memory of the late civil rights icon who passed away last Friday, John Lewis, a young man who started his activism with Dr. King, but along with many others pushed for the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five, the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, and was considered the conscience of our Congress. So when, even though we're here in Monterey, I think many of us were inspired by his legacy and his work, but also the impact of the legislation that many valiant civil rights champions fought for. They certainly had an impact on many of our own lives directly, and even our own political careers that provided greater opportunities. Certainly, the Voting Rights Act being one of those that was championed by Latino civil rights champions like Joaquin Avila to make changes in places like Salinas and in Watsonville. So they did have a far-reaching impact outside of the southern states. So I just wanted to, as Monterey County Supervisor, express my gratitude and my thanks to him and his family for what he did for our nation, and certainly it's a tremendous loss. Here locally, as the year goes on, it's like one, I know we've had already nineteen deaths, but to lose our mayor this year, Joe Gunter, and now Ralph Rubio, one of the early Latino electeds, longest-serving in Monterey County, another sad time for me as a younger Latino elected official, and certainly I'm thankful for journeying in memory that the flags are at half-staff for twelve days for Mayor Rubio. And just want to salute their lifetime of service and their legacy here in the county as well. Mayor Gunter is having his, um, community memorial this Friday at eleven o'clock at Rabo Bank, but members of the community must send an email requesting a ticket or tickets in order to be able to get in because of the limited capacity. So I would encourage members of the public who want to attend to do that as soon as possible before those tickets run out. Lastly, I wanted to, and talking about civil rights and talking about redistricting, I got an op-ed that I wrote along with nine other former chairs of the California Latino Legislative Caucus coming out in Cal Matters tomorrow, just talking about the lack of Latino representation on the California Citizens Redistricting Commission. That was a very rigorous process, where over twenty thousand people applied, over seven, just over seventeen thousand eligible applicants, but it was narrowed down to sixty, twenty Democrats, twenty Republicans, twenty independents, and we had three from the Monterey Bay, and only three from the entire central coast. One Republican from Santa Cruz, but two of our former county staff. Manny Gonzalez, our former Assistant C A O, and former Deputy County Council, Rebecca Saniceros, actually made it to the final sixty, and unfortunately, in the peremptory strikes that are allowed by the legislative leaders, Manny Gonzalez and Rebecca Saniceros were struck out. And in the end, out of the first eight random picks, there were no Latinos chosen to serve on that Citizens Redistricting Commission, and we now have no eligible candidates at all from the central coast, which is very disappointing. So I just put that out there because it was something that I was monitoring, but certainly on a Citizens Redistricting Commission, it should reflect the people of California, and certainly the central coast should also have representation on drafting and creating those boundaries for congressional, senate, assembly, and Board of Equalization seats. So it's not over, so we hope that we're gonna keep advocating to hopefully get better representations as six more seats will now be chosen by the eight, the lucky eight members chosen with the random draw. With that, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Alejo. Um, I had a couple of comments. I did want to talk a little about John Lewis and the loss of his great legacy. I know that I spent a lot of time reflecting on what he did for our country this weekend, and as we continue to battle hate in our communities, I want to make sure that we support his position to eradicate hate from our country in every form. Uh, we had some great town halls last week, and I wanted to share with the public my deepest thank yous and appreciation for turning out. We had a town hall regarding the South of Salinas interchange. We had about sixty public members give us great feedback on that town hall via Zoom. And then the following night, I got to participate on M B E P's, the Monterey Bay Economic Partnership Housing Town Hall, along with our Congressman, State Senator, State Assemblyman, and Mayors from the Salinas Valley to talk about what we're doing to bring more housing to our region. So I want to thank M B E P for putting that together. The collaboration was wonderful. Lastly, today, I did want to speak a little to some of the news articles that have been running lately about testing. I know we're all frustrated with some of the state testing sites and the speed at which those numbers are turning around at, but I do see a bright spot in those numbers. And that's if you look at the counties turn around, I know years ago, the public testing lab, the public health lab was on the block. There was a call to remove that from our budget, but we held strong, and we have a great public lab that's doing incredible work turning test results around in as little as twelve and often under twenty-four hours. Um, working in that lab, we have four people right now, actually five people, who are doing some incredible work, and I wanted to call them out by name because while most testing in this state is lagging, they're actually picking it up and doing even more. Uh, and so those names are Ronnie Lunsford, Carlos Anaya, Sarah Riddick, Donna Ferguson, and also Elizabeth Newman. Those are the people running our county lab, turning around so many results every single day for Monterey County residents to bring them peace of mind and to bring them answers. And so I want to thank our public health lab professionals for all that they're doing for Monterey County residents in this public format. I really think that they're some of the heroes that often we don't hear about enough, and so I wanted to make sure that we knew their names today. And with that, I will turn to our C A O for his comments and referrals.
Uh, no referrals today, and my only comment is to thank you for recognizing some of the great work that our county staff are doing, especially the public health lab.
All right, with that, we're gonna go into our general public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on items not on today's agenda, and you can share your thoughts for two minutes, so we have a two-minute public comment now open. I'm gonna go to the room first. Please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Dan Seed. I'm a civilian employee at the Monterey County Sheriff's Office. Throughout this COVID ordeal, I have continued to carry out my duties without pause. And I, my duties include personally interact with the general public on a daily basis. In early January this year, I purchased plane tickets to visit my eighty-two-year-old mother in China for five weeks. However, in February, or that was gonna take place in February and March, the virus canceled my trip, but I was fortunate to receive a full refund from the airline. This, however, left me with a difficult dilemma. I now have over three hundred and seventy hours of vacation slash sick time. With the county, I will exceed the three hundred and ninety maximum hours within a month. With COVID still going on, there is little that's worthwhile to take time off for. I'm confident that I'm speaking on behalf of many of my colleagues that works for Monterey County. With the current statewide lockdown, and many local school districts already announced that next year they're gonna have remote learning, we are faced with either using our vacation time without purpose due to the low maximum ceiling, and hope that we have sufficient time remaining to tend to homebound school-age children in the coming months. This is why I'm here today, to urge the board to consider a lift of this three hundred and ninety-hour vacation time ceiling that are imposed on the majority of the county employees, at least for the duration of the pandemic. This will provide flexibility for many of us who continue to faithfully serve the public through these difficult times. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in room?
Good morning, members of the Board of Supervisors. Cecil Lada, I'm here with Milpa, and I would like to present to all the members of the Board of Supervisors a list of demands that we presented last week to the community around finding ways for the youth center, the juvenile hall, and the jail to reduce their numbers due to COVID. As you probably have seen reports, COVID has become a major issue in the jail, and we're looking forward to working with the Board of Supervisors, along with the public defender, the D A, and the courts to find ways where we can lower the numbers. Uh, COVID has taken a hold in those facilities, and we also like to point out that nationally, of the top ten hotspots around the country, nine of them are prisons or jails, and four of them are in California. And, you know, Monterey County is definitely going through an issue right now, and I know that the Sheriff's Department and others are doing testing, and the numbers have already exceeded more than a hundred people in the jail. So, um, a list of recommendations, demands, based on recommendations from national groups. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lada. I'm gonna go to the Zoom next. See, nobody else in room, and...
Hello, um, my name is Nick Busney. I'm a native of Salinas and long-term resident, and educator as well. Um, I just wanted to echo Caesar's demands from Milpa that I think, as well as Supervisor Parker, I think we need to take the same care that we do with our children as we do with those incarcerated. Um, you know, to be sentenced in jail or youth detention should not be a death sentence or a sentence for this terrifying virus. Uh, so we need to partner with our health experts, and there has to be transparency in our community. I was looking at the sheriff's website, the last update was on June eighth, when there are only six cases. Now there are over one hundred. Um, so the public needs to be informed on a daily basis as to what are the case numbers, um, hospitalizations, recoveries, as well as fatalities, and exactly what protocols are being taken. How are we partnering with these health experts? Um, what are the recommendations, and exactly how is our county following them? Um, I, I think now is a great moment of reckoning within our nation, with our, and with our city and counties as well, um, where we are starting to awaken to new, um, solutions and visions of justice, where it's no longer punitive. We know that by incarcerating people, uh, we are not in any way helping to rehabilitate them and reintegrate them into our society, uh, but we are furthering violence in our communities and trauma. So we need to take, um, more compassion towards those incarcerated and our most vulnerable communities, um, and provide the supports and services and reintegration programs to heal our communities and our most vulnerable populations. Uh, most people who are incarcerated are there because of drug addiction, uh, mental health issues, and poverty. And if we're criminalizing these social ills without solving them, um, you know, what message are we sending to our future youth and our current community? So I urge the county to take bold leadership in taking care of our people in detention. Thank you.
Anybody else in room? Okay, at this point, we're gonna turn to the Zoom. Bill Light, we're gonna go ahead and give you the ability to unmute yourself and share a two-minute public comment with this board.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I attended a Board of Directors Water Agency meeting yesterday, and the public was informed that the lease payment at Schilling for their office space has increased to one point four million dollars annually. Um, they're doing a number of cost-cutting maneuvers, taking away some salary and benefits. They're cutting contractors, consultants. They're doing some other accounting magic to wipe away the... They're having to draw six million dollars on their reserves, and they're down to about eight million. So we're looking at immediate insolvency here within the next eighteen months for that agency. They moved to Schilling Place because they were told and shown that it was gonna be a lower cost. They were paying about two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year at Blanco Circle. They're now facing, since they left Blanco Circle, a four hundred and fifty percent increase on their lease payments or through the cost allocation accounting that the county does. This is an agency that's already dead broke, and it seems like extortion to be taking more money from them. And quite honestly, this building at Schilling has been pretty much a disaster. You took away tax revenue generating business, moved out of there, and now we've got one that's just costing taxpayers a lot of money. Now it's sitting there mostly empty because people are working from home. Uh, you got a gym over there that's probably empty and noncompliant with the health officer. You have an empty cafeteria. You've got empty parking spaces out there that perhaps could be servicing homeless people in our community. It's just a real disgrace, and you launched this, the county launched this, increase at the very last minute to where they've had to now adjust their budget, you know, again. So I applaud the Chair of the Committee, or of the Board, Mr. Ortiz. Um, he's direct, he and the Board have directed staff to start looking immediately for alternative options to move out of Schilling. And we don't live in a one-shop, you know, one-stop-shop place environment anymore with the virus and just everything else. It should really be a node space. Give everybody a laptop, allow them to plug in when they need to at a desk.
Thank you, Mr. Lada. Your two minutes are up. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chair. I appreciate it.
So I'm gonna go next to somebody whose area code is two oh nine, last three are six one two.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Good morning. I would like to just make a note. Um, we all need to realize that we're not living in ordinary times of pandemic. They turn all of our lives upside down on this in regards to the inmates. Uh, I also understand that this is not an easy subject to deal with. Nonetheless, it has to be dealt with. I feel that being arrested should not be a death sentence. My husband is being held at the Monterey County Jail. I don't live in the area. Uh, I feel that the pre-trial detainees should have some kind of, somebody should have some kind of compassion for them. Uh, our Constitution states that we are not guilty until we're proven guilty. We should be innocent. Uh, they haven't been convicted of any crime yet. They've been arrested, but other than that, nothing has been proven. My husband's been there for almost a year and a half, going on a year and a half. He's being housed with seventy to ninety inmates. Uh, they're sleeping in bunk beds that are stack three high. What kind of social distancing can they have? They can't have any social distancing. The inmates are being given a white pill, not even being told what it's for. Uh, the medical care there is, it's just not appropriate. I feel that it falls under the cruel and unusual punishment. Um, it's just important to remember that we're not, we're not, we're not supposed to be arrested and just all of a sudden sign up for being, having it be in a death sentence for us. Uh, we just need to realize that the pandemic is not a normal situation. Our lives have all been torn upside down. Um, I'm just asking for compassionate release upon these inmates. I feel our justice system, as we all know, is very, very, uh, a bad justice system, to put it in small words. It's a bad justice system. A lot of the times, I feel that, you know, the area is very, very racist because I don't live in that area, and I'm not calling out any names. I'm just saying it's very racist against the Hispanics and against the black community. Uh, we have dealing with D As that are there, and if somebody is not, if they find a charge on somebody or somebody's arrested under certain circumstance, and she offers them a plea, if they do not accept a plea, she's gonna offer them twenty-five years or give them longer. She offers them a twenty-five-year plea, they don't take it, she's gonna give them life. What kind of a D A do we have? I mean, it's just not right.
Thank you very much. Your two minutes are up. We appreciate your comments. Thank you. We're gonna go on to Edgar Ibarra. Mr. Ibarra, we're gonna give you the ability to unmute yourself and share a two-minute public comment with this board.
Hola buenos dias. My name is Edgar Ibarra. I'm the Leadership and Product Coordinator at Milpa. And, um, I guess I'm here to just, uh, to just basically bring light to like what's happening in, not just at the adult detention facilities in Monterey County, but at the juvenile detention facilities at both the youth center, Monterey County Youth Center and the juvenile hall. We have young people that are currently incarcerated for violations of probation or misdemeanors. And specifically in these times of COVID nineteen, it's a, it's really, it's really, really challenging for me to get, wrap my head around that, around we're continuously incarcerating young folks for violations of probation and misdemeanor in these times. And, uh, we know that, what kind of, what the spread can look like within the facility, you know? I myself was incarcerated at one time in a state facility as a minor, and I saw during the H one N one influenza, swine flu time, and I saw the spread of it. It spread literally within the week throughout the whole institution. We're on quarantine for weeks, literally. And my mom was not notified or anything like that, so I could only imagine what the parents are going through. The distress, the, you know, of not knowing if their child's gonna make it or not. What kind of health services are they not even being able to be there alongside and take care of them when they're ill? Uh, so I just want to put that in y'all's mind and have y'all think about that. What if that was your child? What if that was your nephew, your grandson, your granddaughter, you know, in there? And really think about that, sit with that and think about it, you know? But also asking for transparency from our probation department, our sheriff's department, and always from... for transparency from our, our probation department, our sheriff's department and always from accountability and like how many cases are there currently? You know, how mu- how many times are there testing? What does testing look like throughout the institution? How is it going through? We want transparency and accountability and all levels coming from the, uh, any, any, any county department, from probation and the sheriff's and also having the health department being able to conduct routine checks of the facilities to meet standards, uh, state standards in regards to like social distancing and anything like that. Uh, it's really, really important for uh, for our county to step up and not let these folks just uh be there. But once again, I just bring about, wanna bring this back to the young people that are currently incarcerated in their uh.
Thank you, Mr. Ibarra. Your two minutes are up. We appreciate your comment.
Exactly.
I'm gonna go to River, River Naveo, you're next. We'll give you the ability to unmute yourself and share a two-minute public comment with this board.
Thank you so much. My name is River Navi. I'm a resident of Seaside in Jane Parkers District. Um, I'm calling also to echo the concerns around COVID outbreaks in the Monterey County jails and juvenile centers. Um, this is urgent, this is emergency. This is, this should be the first and only thing, honestly, that I feel your board should be addressing. Um, I mean, I, I imagine that the DA, that the um, the health directors in the county, um, that they hopefully are, are in talks about this, but the action needs to be swift and it needs to be immediate. Um, as the members of Milpa have shared, uh, prisons and jails are the hotspots and these people have no way to socially distance. Um, their right to health here is being compromised because they, what? They were uh, you know, uh, committed um for some kind of crime and we know that most of these are drug-related or um, as was just pointed out, they have to do with breaking probation or parole. We need to get people out of prisons and we need to do it immediately. And to think that, oh, well, let, you know, there's a COVID outbreak there, let's quarantine them within the jail is absolutely preposterous. There's so much space and so much room in our county where people can be moved or released, where they will have the ability to socially distance whether or not they test positive for COVID. And it, it just has to be done and it has to be done now. Now, I mean, now is the only time we, we see again and again through the country and through the world that we drag our heels and people die. And I'm not all right with our incarcerated community members dying simply because they've been incarcerated. They have not been served sentences to death and we cannot allow this to happen. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're gonna go to Emily Zavala next. Emily, we'll give you the ability to unmute yourself and share a two-minute public comment with this board.
Hi, everybody. Good morning. So, my name's Emily, uh, born and raised here in Salinas. Uh, currently I have a loved one in jail, you know, in there because of mental illness and addiction. So I just wanna address that addiction shouldn't be criminalized. It's, you know, it's out of our control. So there should be more effort put into rehabs, you know, a healthy way of helping those that are incarcerated and then them being in jail right now and nobody caring, you know, they come in with a mask, fine, they don't have a mask, wow, okay, so you die, you know, it doesn't matter if you're in here because you're a broke creation. We need to address mental illness, addiction, because, you know, those combined, how, like, people lose it all and they end up at the bottom of society, which is the shit of society, right? So they are at the bottom, they're in jail, nobody cares about them, but people care about them. We need for them to come out and be better members of society, you know? I have known engineers that are homeless, they're addicted, they're drunks, but they're engineers nonetheless, you know? I've known beautiful people that have just lost it all and I just don't think that that should be a death sentence, you know, uh, especially when it's something out of our control. You guys should pro- uh, make sure that there's proper pe- uh, proper protection equipment. Um, and you know, just have more empathy. That's what is really at the root of this, empathy, because just like we all, most of us know somebody in law enforcement, most of us know somebody that's incarcerated. And it doesn't matter, you know, if they're in there, for whatever, they're in there, but death shouldn't be the answer. We need to rehabilit, rehab these people and just, you know, help them be better members of society function. Petty crimes should not be a death sentence and we should all be held accountable and there should be a lot of transparency. Mothers shouldn't worry, you know, they should be able to get that call and it'd be okay, but you know, times are tough, people can't work. So, yes, there should, all the needs that Milpa addressed should be met. There should be free phone calls. Yes.
Thank you. We've, you met two minutes. We're gonna go ahead and move on. We thank you for your public comment. Next, we're gonna go to Israel Villa. Israel, we'll give you the ability to unmute yourself and share a two-minute public comment with this board.
Uh, good morning. Muy buenos dias. Israel Villa, proud native of Isalinas, currently voting constituent in nineteen ninety-six. Um, echoing the other previous uh, public comments around our incarcerated brothers and sisters and children in our local facilities. Um, you know, one of the first bold moves that our governor made, when he became governor, was to e- was to end a moratorium on the death penalty, but yet, as of now, eleven inmates have died just in San Quinn and I don't even know what the count is across the state. So I echo again everybody's concerns, you know, this board, uh, our county supervisors actually has authority and power to make some changes, the changes that your community and constituents are asking for. So I stand firmly by the same demands. I feel that especially all of our kids, all of our kids who are already sentenced and are coming home, that means everybody in the youth center, they're all sentenced, they're all less than a year to the house, they should all be released. Any adults who are already sentenced and close to the house should be released. Any inmates, adults and/or youth who have medical conditions such as asthma should immediately be released. Um, and we're asking for you to, again, y'all have showed great leadership in the past and uh, this is definitely a, a big concern of ours and we need your leadership on this one. Again, we need to expedite releases, um, because as others have mentioned, nobody here in Monterey County has been sentenced to death that I'm aware of, you know, and it would be the biggest injustice for any of these people, 'cause they're all human beings. They might not be y'all kids, but there's some of our kids and they need to be released immediately. Um, 'cause at the end of the day, no one's, no one can get well in none of their cells. Those cells don't help. I've been, I've been there, that doesn't help at all and we need to free our people and we need to do so immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Israel. We're gonna go to Chris Carpenter next. Mr. Carpenter, we'll give you the ability to unmute yourself and share a two-minute public comment with this board. We're gonna go to Bernie Gomez next. Bernie, we're gonna give you the ability to unmute yourself and share a two-minute public comment with this board.
Uh, yes, buenos dias. Uh, good morning, Board Chair. Um, yeah, my name's Bernie Gomez, uh, member of the Milpa Collective. Uh, so I just wanna say, you know, having intimate experience in uh, with incarceration and seeing firsthand what uh, you know, outbreaks do uh, to folks, uh, to staff in the, in those settings, uh, it's scary, you know? Uh, the reality is, is that, you know, the sheriff's office, the county jail, that you say, you know, they don't have the ability to contain this, they don't have the uh, the staff, the equipment, the, you know, even the, the, you know, the knowledge is of how to uh, provide social distancing, 'cause there, you can't. You know, you're, you're, we're stacked into one building and there's no, you know, it's like, there's, there's just no way around it. Um, so I mean, I just, I wanna, I just urge the board to really think about uh, you know, about, about decompressing the uh, these facilities, you know? There's people in there that just, for minor offenses and drug addiction, these things are, uh, these are things that we need to address, you know, uh, through social services, not incarceration. Um, we need to, you know, help our people, um, not do intervention work, 'cause, you know, that means that, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna engage once it happens, like, no, it's like, we need to start looking into prevention work and what does that look like? And the, I believe the way, you know, the board can prevent further outbreak is by decompressing this, th- these facilities. Um, you know, back in March or February, there was hardly any, you know, COVID-related cases and now all of a sudden, you know, it's like, you know, you got this spike. So what's it gonna take? Is it gonna take for the whole facility to uh, go up in COVID cases? I mean, 'cause that's just what's gonna happen, you know, uh, there's a.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Your two minutes are up. We appreciate your public comment. We're gonna go to Reiko Sakai next. Reiko?
Hello, uh, thank you for taking my comment. My name is Reiko Sakai. I'm a resident of Seaside and I'm a physician, actually, I'm a pediatrician specifically in Salinas. Um, and I wanna extend my gratitude to uh, the board for their dedication and service to our community. Uh, I'm also wanting to express gratitude and solidarity with our community leaders who are bringing light to the situation of the crisis, in fact, emergency of the COVID outbreak in Monterey County detention facilities. And again, as a physician, I'd like to express uh, my full support of the recommendations put forth by uh, the Milpa Collective especially. And I would like to highlight some specific uh, recommendations that they've put forth that I wholeheartedly support, including to release all youth from detention facilities. Um, these are unprecedented times and this is an um, bold action needs to be taken. Um, the American Academy of Pediatrics going off of uh, a plethora over years of scientific evidence shows that children, especially in times of crisis, need to be united with their loved ones, with their families. Um, and in particular, um, especially for safety in terms of social distancing and protecting them in the context of this pandemic, I believe that is crucial. Um, I'd also like to support the recommendation um, to release from secure commitment facilities youth who are um, uh, confined due to just misdemeanors, nonviolent felony offenses. I'd also like to recommend and support uh, that for youth on supervision, that there are no in-person contact with probation or parole staff, uh, so as to, again, uh, obey and, and abide by public health recommendations for social distancing. Um, and, and finally, I would also like to echo the calls for transparency. Um, I believe that our public health department, our, our county public health department has done an excellent job with daily updates on our, our dashboard for COVID nineteen data and we need the same thing uh, for the situation in the detention facilities. So we need daily data on testing, on protocols, procedures. We need um, reports from the County Department of Health for uh, to, doing investigations into the conditions into the detention facilities. So again, I just urge you to um, have the youth especially in mind, but all people uh, in our community who, who have been incarcerated and, and follow the very well-informed and clear recommendations from the Milpa Collective and other community advocates. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll close public comment, bring it back to this board for our scheduled matters. Mr. Chulos.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board Member. So we have four updates for you in the COVID uh, update portion of the agenda. Uh, we'd like to start with Dr. Moreno and Kristi Michie on monitoring metrics and then uh, segue into a co- a discussion by Dr. Moreno on the school reopening exemption provisions. And then we have two other items after that.
Hi. Good morning, Chair, Supervisors, Ed Moreno, Health Officer, Monterey County. So, yeah, we could talk a little bit about metrics, but um, I think uh, the newest development is the guidance has come out from uh, California Department of Public Health on opening uh, schools for in-classroom uh, instruction. So, why don't I go ahead and start with um, some of the ma- uh, metrics that uh, we are monitoring here in Monterey County? And for that, Kristi Michie, Assistant Director of Public Health, provide that information.
Good morning, everyone. I'm going to try to share my screen here um, and show you some of our local metrics that are publicly available on our website. I just wanna highlight a few things this morning. Um, our fourteen-day cumulative incidence rate uh, is at two hundred and fifty-three people per one hundred thousand population. We have had an increase in the percent of alternative housing beds designated for individuals diagnosed with COVID nineteen um, that have, are filled. Right now, uh, twenty-three percent of our available beds are filled. That's a, a big increase from our last update last week. A lot of those um, beds are being filled with close contacts to uh, positive cases, cases who are unable to um, isolate appropriately at home and with some of our individuals who have been uh, released from the Monterey County Jail who don't have a way to isolate themselves uh, either. We do have, uh, going down to the next section, we do have six skilled nursing facilities that have had cases within the last fourteen days, making our current status as sixty-three percent uh, are uh, COVID-free within the last fourteen days. And then um, just highlighting down in the next section, we have uh, the percentage of our ICU beds that haven't been available averaged over the last fourteen days sits at seventy percent, uh, which is considerably, considerably better than some of the other jurisdictions, particularly in Southern California right now. And lastly, uh, down, I just wanna highlight underneath epidemiology and general surveillance that our overall test positivity rate for the past seven days is declining. We're currently at ten point three percent, um, and that's, that's a decline from uh, the, close to the fourteen and fifteen percent range last week. And with that, I'll let Dr. Moreno talk about some of the state metrics and um, the impact that it's having on um, some of our closures.
All right, so what we have here is the um, I'm sharing with you, can you still, sorry, can you see that okay? All right. So this is from the California Department of Public Health and this is um, the website, the webpage that shows the data for all counties in California that um, and which counties are exceeding the state's thresholds. You can see that at the top, we have the uh, excuse me, this is the little left column here are the counties and this, skipping this column, this count, this column is the first set of uh, metrics, uh, and it's the one that most counties, uh, if they do exceed the threshold, this is the area where we are exceeding. Um, elevated disease transmission can be monitored with case rate for hundred thousand over fourteen days and test positivity rate um, over the last seven days. So as we go down to uh, excuse me, Monterey County here, you can see that um, we have exceeded the case rate of a hundred per hundred thousand over fourteen days. Uh, and we are also still exceeding the case positivity rate threshold of eight percent. And uh, for those reasons, uh, we are still on the monitoring list for state of California as of today. Uh, the website has thirty-one counties on the monitoring list, but uh, San Francisco was just recently added to uh, the monitoring list, but doesn't appear on, on the list, I don't believe. So um, what that means is that um, uh, what's happened uh, not too long ago was that um, we were ordered by the state to close uh, bars, brew pubs and wineries. And then about a week or two later, we were then ordered as well to uh, close a lot of um, indoor business activities, um, barbers, for example, indoor dining, uh, salons, just to name a few. And um, that's already been implemented and, and so, um, but just July seventeenth has the state California Department of Public Health uh, issued guidance as we uh, uh, approached the planned uh, beginning of uh, the school year this fall, um, some guidance or a framework uh, for locals to follow to determine whether or not uh, schools can begin the school year in the classroom. So the guidance, uh, I'll briefly go through the guidance, um, and there's, I think, uh, Mr. Chulos asked that I talk, uh, focus a little time on waivers, uh, because there is a provision for waivers uh, for, in certain circumstances. But this framework uh, does uh, mention the, uh, that schools and school districts may reopen for in-person instruction at any time if they are located in a school, excuse me, a local health jurisdiction that has not been on the county monitoring list within the prior fourteen days. So as we look at, as I work with Kristi Michie, our lead epidemiologist here, um, at our trends for the um, case rate, uh, we, I'm, it's, it hasn't shown a decline, uh, for example, with our, our positivity rate will decline from time to time. We really haven't seen it, uh, the case rate declining. So we're, as we get within two or three weeks now of, of opening of some schools, um, it appears that uh, we, we may still be on the monitoring list fourteen days before uh, some of our schools are planned to open, which means those schools would need to uh, which means those schools would need to, uh, uh, open again, but not within classroom, uh, instruction. There is a, um, um, i- if some of our schools, if we were to, at a point where we could start, uh, in class instruction, um, the framework goes on to say that if local health jurisdiction has been, um, uh, excuse me, I'm sorry, um, uh, the waivers, I'm sorry. Let me, I got sidetracked and let me talk about the waivers. Um, so schools may still, superintendents may still, uh, want to begin the school year with, uh, in-classroom instruction. So the framework from the California Department of Public Health does allow for, um, school district, uh, superintendents or, or school superintendents, uh, to, uh, issue a waiver. And a right waiver, um, may be granted by the local health officer for elementary schools to open for in-person instruction. And we clarify that's K through either five or six, depending on the school. Um, it may only be granted if one is requested by the superintendent, uh, or equivalent for a private school in consultation with labor, parent and community organizations. Local health officers must review local community EpiData, consider other public health interventions and consult with California Department of Public, Public Health when considering a waiver request. So, uh, I, I and my colleagues in the Central Coast and Bay Area are, um, recognizing that, uh, waivers tend to be a formal process with a form or a template and application, uh, for the formal request. And often, um, when waivers are being considered for other reasons, there are criteria that must be met and justifications. So the framework, uh, when it was released, did not provide that type of guidance. And so my colleagues and I are going to be working with California Department of Public Health this week to, uh, have discussion on the process by which schools could, uh, uh, more formally, uh, request a waiver if they, if they, if they are in a jurisdiction that has, is, had been on the monitoring list for the last 14 days and are otherwise required to, uh, to provide instruction with distance learning. Uh, the guidance, I'll take a few more minutes just to, uh, for an overview of the rest of the framework. Uh, the guy, the framework also provides information on how schools should, uh, approach testing of, um, a school staff, not the children, but school staff, which is basically talking about surveillance testing. You're not testing people who are sick, you're testing people who don't have symptoms and are working to determine the, uh, the prevalence of, um, of COVID-19 among the staff. And some suggestions on what to do, um, if there's, uh, uh, they identify, um, uh, individuals who either test positive um, or are close contact to someone who is a confirmed COVID-19, um, individual and someone who has symptoms of COVID-19. So there's guidance there that the schools can use, um, to, uh, uh, in conjunction with our public health, uh, staff, uh, with, what steps to take with the schools, uh, the school staff and the children. Uh, there's also guidance on closures and, uh, a closure, individual school can close, um, when there are multiple cases in multiple cohorts at a school or when at least 5% of the total number of teachers, students, staff are cases within the 14-day period. Uh, and, or when the local health officer may, uh, determine school closure is warranted for other reasons. Um, and there's also a criteria for an entire school district closing. And the recommendation is that a school, uh, school district should close all its schools. If 25% or more of schools in the district have closed due to COVID-19 within the last 14 days and in consultation with local public health. So that's the, the broad overview of, of the framework that's come out. Um, my understanding, Supervisors, is that, um, CDPH leadership will be, um, looking towards, uh, looking to create a freak, uh, frequently asked questions, um, uh, documents that can be used at the local level to respond to some of the more detailed inquiries and questions that are coming from, uh, superintendents on, uh, interpreting and implementing, uh, the, the new framework in conjunction with the revised, uh, uh, industry sector guidance for schools to reopen. Uh, and also guidance that, uh, the Cal, uh, State, uh, Department of Education has provided as well. So that's my update on the statewide metrics and the most recent development, uh, regarding, uh, opening of schools for, or not opening of schools for in-classroom instruction at the beginning of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, thank you, Dr. Moreno. Uh, we'd like to now, uh, turn to the Sheriff, uh, Sheriff Bernal for an update on the jail, uh, situation with regard to the COVID, um, virus.
Thank you, Nick. Uh, good morning, Chair, Members of the Board. Uh, to date, we've, uh, our, our inmate population right now is right about 700. To date, we've tested 420 inmates, uh, 180 have come back positive. Uh, they're confined to four housing units. Um, that's 43% of those tested are, have come back positive. We've tested 189 of our employees and contractors that work in the jail and nine have come back positive. I believe two have returned to work since. Um, we've had a total of four inmates that have required advanced care and have gone to the hospital. One has since returned. Uh, one has been released and two still remain at the hospital for the, for the advanced care. Um, it's important to note that we have received approval from the state fire marshal to, uh, occupy a portion of our, our jail expansion that, uh, which the portion has been completed. And, uh, we have support from the BSCC also to, to, uh, house inmates and use that as a clean quarantined area for inmates. Uh, medical staff is monitoring the inmates that are COVID-positive and, and we continue to test inmates, uh, daily. Uh, we have been working with the Monterey County Health Department. Uh, they have been involved in our testing and our protocols from the very beginning. And, uh, usually we get our tests back within 24 hours. So, um, they've been doing a great job in, in getting our tests back quickly. Um, I have exercised the emergency release order and released, uh, what inmates that I can. I can assure you, the majority of our population are sex offenders and serious felons. Uh, but we are working with the courts to, uh, anybody that can be released early on sentences. Um, we are working closely with the courts to do that. Um, as far as social distancing, we encourage social distancing in each of our housing areas. We do supply, uh, masks for our inmates and, and sanitizers. And we, we, uh, keep the housing area sanitized as best we can. So, um, I believe that's about all I have right now. Do you have any questions? I, I think one thing I missed was we have, uh, we have 76 inmates that are awaiting transfer to California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. Um, we had one, one that was released. He was, uh, time served for his CDC sentence, so he was released. But at, at the present time, we have 76 inmates that are awaiting transfer to CDCR, um, with a population of roughly 700 right now.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you, Sheriff. Uh, last, we'd like to hear from Irma Ramirez-Bowd, our HR Director, regarding the county emergency response, uh, HR Emergency Response Manual, the provisions that relate to telework and school closure. Thank you.
Good morning, um, Chair and Members of the Board and others. Um, thank you for the opportunity to be able to share with you some of our recent updates. And, um, Arianna, who is part of my team, um, Arianna Ortado, who is Senior Personnel Analyst, has been assisting me with a lot of our, uh, policy updates, um, as it pertains to COVID-19. Um, so recently, um, the governor, uh, as of last week, gave a, um, announcement regarding guidance to schools and school-based programs. Um, and this guidance is impacting our workforce. So that prompted us to go back and take a look at our Emergency Response Manual. Um, and so we've updated our Section 7 of the Telework, uh, Work From Home Policy, as well as our school daycare facility closure, um, to now include the mandated, um, distant learning. And, um, the next slide, what I would like is for Ari to kind of share with you the, um, the different examples that we have put into place, um, in our Telework section and also in our section on the school and daycare closures. So Ari, with that said, would you, um, please share with the board those examples?
Absolutely. Uh, good morning, uh, Chair Lopez, uh, Board Members. Um, as Irma mentioned, these two sections have been updated to include, uh, the use of alternative work schedules. These sections do, um, encourage department heads to implement, um, the alternative work schedules and hours, uh, to allow for the continued service delivery to the public as well as addressing the needs of, um, our impacted workforce. Um, alternative work schedules are at the discretion of the department head or designee and should be applied where operationally feasible. They must commence at the beginning of a pay period and can include a combination of both telework as well as, um, onsite, uh, work hours where employees report to their regular work site. Some examples include a split schedule where an employee can work part of their, um, work hours for the day early morning and then the remainder later in the evening. Um, we also have early or late schedules where an employee can begin their work shift either early in the morning and get out earlier and, uh, or start their, uh, work hours later in the evening and work through the evening hours. Um, we also have a combination arrangement. This would include both, uh, telework and onsite work where the employee would be reporting to their regular work site on some days or during certain hours of the day and then telecommute for the remainder of the hours. And then finally, we have the weekend work combination where employees can work limited hours during the week and then make up the remaining hours on the weekends. Um, ultimately, the, the implementation of alternative work schedules is intended to provide operational flexibility to departments, uh, to both meet their operational needs as well as continue to address the needs of our impacted workforce. Um, so with that, I will hand it back over to Irma for any questions that your board may have.
Any questions from any Members of the Board?
Okay. Thank you very much, Irma. So at this point, I'm going to open it up to the board for comments. Any comments or questions on any of the presentations? Okay. Seeing no hands going up, uh, I'm going to open it up for public comment on these presentations. We're going to keep it to one minute, please. Mr. Peterson.
Good n- good morning. My name is Eric Peterson. I'd just like to take a, a moment and make some comments about, uh, flexi-place and alternative work schedules and some of the myths about those. Uh, when I was working through the efforts of my union, the National Treasury Employees Union, we had, uh, pretty good flexi-place and alternative work schedules. Um, and, uh, since I've left, they've been improved. And what I found was two things. First of all, I was able to get an awful lot more done, working at home or, and working odd hours. Uh, uh, my estimate was three times as much done. And the second thing that we found was the biggest problem we had was managers trying to micromanage or undermine the program. And my union, National Treasury Employees Union, had to fight that an awful lot. I would encourage as much flexi-place and alternative work schedules as possible, simply because it allows more to get done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm really grateful to be here. Thank you for the time and just being present in the space. I know that it takes a lot just to be here right now, so I'm grateful. So, um, I'd like to just speak on behalf of the fact that my, my cousin, my first cousin, um, he's incarcerated right now. And he has been in and out of the system since I can remember. And I am personal witness that can attest to how the, the system itself has really not served him. He didn't get help from his teachers because they were too overworked. And, um, my heart goes out to all the teachers who are being parents, who are being therapists, who are being so much more than what they get paid to do. My best friends are teachers, okay? Secondly, I think that anybody who is currently incarcerated that is just waiting to pay bail, but they can't afford it, should be let out. We know they're safe. We know they put in the time and the work. Can we as a community come together to raise funds? I'm willing to do the work. I will do all the work you need me to do for free so that they don't have to die. I don't want my cousin to die.
Thank you. Anybody else in room? Seeing no hands, I'm going to go to the Zoom. I have one hand up. That's Bill Light. Mr. Bill Light.
Thank you, Chair. Bill Light, resident of Monterey County. Um, this is just an extremely tough situation and I, I think it's unfair to staff and our health officer to really be at the whim of the governor, of supervisors that are putting this on their shoulders to, to, you know, solely to kind of manage and report back to you. It's just a very difficult situation and I think a lot of people are looking and saying, okay, my kids can't go to school. Uh, my business may not be able to be operated. Um, I got mortgage payments to make. Um, you know, there are some, you know, I like to believe most people are good, but there are some bad people in our community. And, and I'm not saying everybody in the jail, uh, deserves to be there, but I, I just hear some of the rhetoric and I'm just like, why are we paying taxes? Why are we willfully giving our money to this, I'll put it in quotes, rabbit quotes here, "the process", which is completely broken and, and it's at every level of government. And, um, it's just really sad, it's just really sad to see. Thanks, thanks for letting me talk.
We appreciate your comment. Thank you. We're going to bring it back to this board. Oh, I have one more hand up. Erica Nava, Erica Nava. I give you the ability on Meet Yourself, share a one-minute public comment with this board.
Sí, buenas, buenos días. Yo hablo español. Mi comentario es que yo sé que es muy difícil ahorita todas las circunstancias, todas las decisiones que se están tomando para ustedes y para toda la comunidad. A mí me gustaría pedirles que este tipo de, de miren que hacen, nos pusieran un traductor en lo que es en el Zoom, porque nuestro inglés es muy corto y esta información ahorita es tan importante que nuestra comunidad latina que no hablamos el idioma agradeceríamos mucho si nos pusieran un traductor. Muchas gracias por todo el esfuerzo que están haciendo.
Gracias, Erica. For those who don't speak Spanish, her request was to have better translation in terms of using the Zoom to provide translation because the information that we are relaying to the community is critical in these times. And she's asking that we do a better job of getting that information out through translation on the Zoom call. Gracias otra vez, Erica, por ese comentario. Uh, and so with that, I'll bring it back to the board. And I see Supervisor Parker has her hand up. Supervisor Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wasn't quite quick enough before when you asked if there were questions or comments. Um, I have, um, a question for HR and then, uh, also, uh, question for the sheriff if he could clarify something. So, um, what I'm wondering, as we're looking at these alternatives and, and remote working, are we working on something like, uh, results-based management or some kind of, uh, that, um, I, I think it gets a little bit to Mr. Peterson's comment about productivity. Um, I, I just wonder if there's a way for us to, uh, for some jobs, um, to really look at, uh, the amount of work that's getting done, uh, almost more so than the hours. Um, because I just, I mean, we just need a whole menu of things, I think. And I just worry that in all of this, what's going to happen is that, uh, whichever, uh, person, usually it's the woman who will step back from their career rather than having the hassle of trying to figure out, um, alternative hours, juggling kids, you know, all of that. It often is the woman who will step away from the workforce or reduce their hours, then have a future career impact. Um, anyway, I just want to make sure that as much as we can, we're creating the conditions for, um, success rather than, um, you know, further, uh, uh, negative impacts. So that's the HR question. Thanks.
Okay. So what I can tell you Supervisor Parker, and thank you so much for that, um, that, um, question. Um, that is an area that, um, that I am continually to work on. And if you give me the opportunity, I will have more to be able to be able to present to all of you. So if I can just say to you, more to come in the very near future that I could present to you in open session.
That's terrific. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure it was, you know, on your radar screen. Thank you. I appreciate that. And Sheriff, I wonder if you could spell out for people the protocols that you follow when someone is booked into the jail? How do you, you know, do you, how do you isolate them? You know, as someone is tested positive or might have been exposed, how do you, what are your options for sequestering people so that the transmission is curtailed as much as possible? I think it would help people to hear what the protocols you follow.
Yeah, so we temp check everybody that is booked in the Monterey County Jail. We, I mean, they're seen by medical staff even before the COVID pandemic. Everybody is seen and screened by medical staff. They are quarantined for 14 days before they are placed in general population. And so before we opened up the jail expansion, the part where the clean part, so to speak, we are very limited in space. So thanks to the fire marshal, the cooperation of them, we have a clean space now that we can quarantine incoming inmates who are coming into the jail on fresh arrests and separating them from the inmates that have tested positive. So we have, I mentioned the four housing areas where they are infected, we're keeping them separate from everybody else in the facility so we don't, you know, to stop the spread. But we continue to check, temperature checks on inmates, and we're quarantining all incoming inmates just to make sure we're not mixing them in with people who aren't infected.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, seeing no additional hands up, we'll consider that report received. And we're going to turn now to Dr. Gray for an update on Esperanza Care. Dr. Gray.
Hi, good morning, Chair Lopez and Supervisors. I'm going to share my screen here. At least try to. So I'm just going to give you a brief update on the Esperanza program, a little bit of history, a little bit of the current state, and then at the end...
Dr. Gray, we still can't see your screen if you were intending to share that.
Okay, I'm trying to. Can you see it now?
Nope, we still see you.
All right.
Which is delightful, but it's not what you're after.
Try it one more time here. I'm assuming still no.
No.
Let me try it one more time.
Oh, now we see it coming. Okay, so we see, we see your PowerPoint but without the presentation started, and now we see your presentation.
Okay, well, I apologize for my technical difficulties. And again, we can be a brief update.
Got it.
Yeah. I'm going to give you a brief update on the Esperanza program, a little bit of history, a little bit of current state, and then just some commentary as we move forward to the So as folks may recall, your board authorized the Esperanza program as a pilot project back in 2015. It had been originally funded with a half million dollars of general fund support. And between November 15 and September of 2017, we provided primary care services. Those services were provided by the Monterey County Health Department's FQHC clinics. We also provided coverage for limited pharmaceuticals, laboratory and radiological services. The laboratory and radiological services were provided at Natividad. And at that particular time, I think we ended that enrollment right around, when we ended the pilot program and moved to the more formal Esperanza program, we had about 2,000 enrollees. In May 2017, the board approved expanding Esperanza. Funding was provided by Natividad to the tune of $2 million per year, and initially we increased enrollment to 2,500 folks. We executed a contract with Pacific Health Alliance, who provided third-party administrative services. And as the board may recall, we collaborated with COPA on new processes, outreach and education. And we implemented kind of, we implemented the new revised Esperanza program in October of 2017. So just to review the eligibility criteria, it's for low-income residents of Monterey County, up to 138% of the federal poverty level, age 26 and older, i.e. folks who are Medi-Cal eligible. They need to be currently uninsured and not eligible for any state-funded or private health insurance plan. Our services at this time include, again, county primary care provided by the FQHC clinics. They're doing preventive care, acute illness care, disease management. Pharmacy is a prioritized generic drug list that focuses on kind of major categories. And then Natividad is providing some outpatient specialty care. I see the list of specialists that are currently being, that are currently providing services here at Natividad. Both the laboratory and all imaging services remain focused at Natividad as well. So what's excluded? Inpatient mental health, substance abuse, inpatient hospital services, surgery services, durable medical equipment, emergency department visits, and PT and OT are all, and out-of-system care are all excluded from coverage in Esperanza at the present time. Pacific Health Alliance is doing, processes enrollment for the program. They issue membership cards, they provide membership notification, they explain member benefits, they help coordinate and provide claims processing amongst the county's provider network, and they also provide us with utilization management and other reports. So when you look at membership, really, it's kind of the 30 to 60 age group comprised the vast majority of our members. And keep in mind that the age eligibility is 26 and greater. The program participants remain, just remain predominantly female. And when you look at the diagnoses, no surprises here. Type 2 diabetes here, type 2 hyperglycemia, and prediabetes, again, comprises, I think, what looks like nearly a third of the diagnoses. The good point is, is 25% of visits have been for immunization and preventive care. So service areas, so the Monterey County Health Department clinics really are doing the bulk of the work. When you look at other, where are the other claims going? 45% are sitting in the pharmacy level for Natividad radiology, 9%, lab, 11%. And specialty care remains of really a very small sliver of the services that are provided to our members. Enrollment, you can see since 2017, we've gone from approximately 1,100 to now 3,500 enrollees, and we've been staying at the 3,500 mark. And as of June 30, 2020, we did have 23 members on the waitlist. So PHA does manage a waitlist on our behalf, and as folks cycle off Esperanza Care, new members are cycled back on. So if you look at monthly enrollment, again, our monthly enrollment for the past fiscal year, the data's only through May, was been 3,500. The Health Department has had approximately 852 Esperanza members, visit them on a monthly basis. Our specialty clinic volume is significantly less, with 42 Esperanza members visiting Natividad specialty clinics on a monthly basis. When you look at the spend, Health Department clinics, keep in mind the Health Department is capitated on a per-member-per-month rate, and that rate is $28. It's been at $28 since the program was initially formed back in 2015. So $2.8 million or 58% of the total spend has gone to provide services in the primary care clinics. Pharmacy is the second largest spend, just shy of $1 million. Pacific Health Alliance, their TPA services, approximately almost $6 million, excuse me, almost $600,000. Natividad, approximately a half a million, and then purchase services is roughly $62,000. So from, this is from October 17 through May, the total spend on the program has been approximately $4.9 million. Before I go to questions, I'd just like to offer just some commentary and suggest perhaps a path forward. As folks are aware, you know, COVID-19 certainly has had a significant impact to our county's safety net with regard to revenues. The California 1115 waiver, which included whole-person, excuse me, which included whole-person care, GPP or the Global Payment Program, and PRIME, which was the public hospital redesign and incentives program, all really came together to strengthen our healthcare delivery system for both Medi-Cal and the uninsured in our community. GPP specifically allowed public healthcare systems like Natividad and the County Health Department to shift care from the emergency department to primary care and preventive care programs. Natividad and the county has relied heavily on this for, to support programs like Esperanza. Given the current situation, the healthcare safety net could certainly be impacted if the federal government fails to renew our existing Medi-Cal waiver through 2021. That is currently being in process, that we do not anticipate an answer probably until fall or winter. So I think my suggestion would be at this point that we continue the program as status quo, that we reevaluate scope and enrollment just after the new year or sooner, pending any news from the federal legislation or the state. Any questions?
Questions from board members? Okay, Supervisor Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Gray. Appreciate this update. Does our third-party administrator track health outcomes and whether it looks like some of the, some of the services being accessed are preventive in terms of the immunizations? But in terms of the diabetes and so on, do we track whether people are successfully managing the disease or whether the severity is getting reduced as a result of having access to the services?
Pacific Health Alliance, to the best of my knowledge, does not specifically track health outcomes. However, both Natividad and the Health Department do report aggregate health outcomes as part of PRIME and other reporting data. So they, in some of those reporting instances, the Esperanza patients would be included in those health outcomes. I think, when you look at specific areas of healthcare, i.e. emergency department utilization, diabetes and some other chronic diseases, I think there's just an overwhelming amount of empirical evidence that suggests that healthcare is good and does have a positive impact in those particular settings. We could probably put some data together if you would like, but I say that with absolute confidence that we're having a positive impact in certainly decreasing ED utilization and in certain chronic illnesses, specifically diabetes.
Thank you. Yes, I know that that is the case generally, and if there is a way to look at Esperanza or like populations, I think it would be helpful, particularly if we are going to evaluate the scope and the enrollment, you know, later this year or early next year. It'd be good to have that data to see what the impacts are of the things that we are doing. Thanks.
Supervisor Adams.
Thank you. Just a quick question. Wanted to ask you, do we have a cap of 3,500 members?
Yes, Supervisor. That cap was set back when the program was kind of redesigned back in 2017. We felt that that would secure, that would help reassure that we would remain within budget parameters and have a manageable population and also not negatively impact any other patient access in either the Health Department or within Natividad's outpatient clinics.
I guess I was kind of surprised that there is such a small waiting list, just 23 people. Does that, to what would you attribute that there aren't more people trying to get in? I mean, just because it's fully subscribed doesn't seem like that would be reason enough not to have a bigger waiting list.
Supervisor, I think I can only speculate, but I would suggest a couple of things. I think that certainly in 2017, 18, the push from our community partners was very aggressive around promoting Esperanza Care, and that may have lessened over a period of time. As you know, it's hard to stay focused on the many priorities we have, some tend to lose some focus. So it may, that may play a role in the size of the waiting list. Additionally, I think that if, I do not have a report on how fast the waiting list moves, but, you know, if putting your name on a waiting list results in a wait that seems to be exceptionally long, then I might would choose to not put myself on the waiting list. I think, I think perhaps a positive would be, you know, my hope would be that more people have health insurance. Certainly cannot confirm that, so my guess, it's most likely related to just program marketing and just kind of the area of focus among our community partners.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Sure. Dr. Gray, I've got a quick question. I know that a big part of the logic was that we were going to help address things before they wound up in an emergency room setting, you know, helping to do some of that preemptive or early detection work. Is there any way to, is there any way to quantify that within the budget and the numbers that we're seeing, or is that still something we would need to extrapolate from the data? Dr. Gray, you're muted.
We would, we would have, we could see if we could create some data. I think the best we could do would be to look at ED utilization and a similar uninsured patient population and then try to see if any of our Esperanza members have visited the ED. So I don't think it would be, not certain if it would be sound from a scientific standpoint, but I think we could produce some data that might offer some glimmer or glimpse into the impact of the program.
Great, thank you. All right, seeing no other board member hands up, I'm going to turn to the public comment. Please come forward. And we'll do one-minute public comment.
I have a question, actually. I'd like to see the slide again that had the exclusions of services from Esperanza Care, if I may, please.
Sure, you're going to challenge me with sharing my screen again. Let me bring it up here.
I hope this doesn't count towards my one minute.
Can you all see it? All right, thank you.
Okay. So my comment is kind of twofold. I wasn't able to be here for the public comment for the last agenda item with regard to reducing the prison populations because of COVID. But in this agenda, in this exclusion list, I see the very first thing that is excluded is inpatient mental health. And I wonder why, as a county, we're not doing more to take into consideration not only, you know, our residents that are here and have the privilege of being free, but also those incarcerated, of really putting mental health at the forefront of health, right? Health is not just what we eat. Health is... Health is, in my opinion, threefold. It's mind, body and spirit. And I praise the actions and the efforts of this board for, and, and what Esperanza care is doing and the service that they're providing to, to our community members. And it's such a great program, especially because I read recently that it also includes undocumented peoples as well. But again, I implore you to please put more effort into the mental health of our, your constituents all over Monterey County and most especially those of the inmates.
Thank you.
Um, as well.
We appreciate your comment.
Thank you kindly.
Thank you.
Anybody else in chambers? Okay, I'm going to go to the Zoom. I've got two hands up. I'm going to start with Cesar Lada. Mr. Lada, you have one minute to share your public comment with this board. Mr. Lada, you have the ability to unmute your mic now? Cesar? Okay, we're going to move on to Israel Villa. Mr. Villa, you have the ability to unmute your mic and you can share your one-minute public comment with this board.
Buenas tardes, again, Israel Villa. I just really wanted to, I think this is a great opportunity to acknowledge the leadership of our county board of supervisors because we did, the community did push for Esperanza care. This is something, again, that needs to be acknowledged, uplifted, and really, really, just again, I wanted to appreciate y'all for this because this man, it brought in my day, it brought in my day some. My public comment is around, I think it's a good example of how important community input is, right? Because unfortunately, for generations, the most important stakeholders have, are continued to be left out, and that's our community members. And I think this is a great example of what our possibilities when community, when community is allowed to assist. So, again, just muchas gracias and appreciate y'all for this.
Thank you, Mr. Villa. At this point, I see Cesar's hand has disappeared. Mr. Lada, let's try that again. Let's see if, we'll give you the ability to mute yourself, see if your microphone's working.
Let's see if, can everybody hear me now? I apologize for technology problems. I want to first thank the board of supervisors' leadership on Esperanza care. Many years ago, we started with Ray Bullock in the Health Department. And now with the partnership between the Health Department and the leadership of Dr. Gray, we've been able to have Esperanza care for a number of years. And we really want to thank the board of supervisors for their leadership on this issue. I do also want to thank Pacific Health Alliance for their work with the patients. And I think that was a, a good move by the board to bring them into this, this partnership. But I do want to point out that we receive reports from patients who go to the county clinic system who ask about Esperanza care, and they're told that it's full and so that it's not available. And so, I think to Supervisor Adams' question about the numbers and the waiting list, I think that's definitely a factor. We've worked with the staff to educate the desk staff to do some of that work. And there's definitely room for improvement there. But really, at the end of this, want to thank the board of supervisors for continuing this forward. And looking forward to maybe down the road, when budgets look different, we can look at increasing the cap and increasing the budgetary amounts for this program.
Thank you, Mr. Lada. We appreciate your public comment. I've got one more coming forward in room. Dr. Gray, they want to challenge you one more time to put your slide up there.
The same slide?
Sorry, but it's so helpful. Thank you so much.
All right, I'm going to put it back up.
No pressure.
There you go.
Thank you very, very much. Great. So, I just want to speak on behalf of inpatient mental, inpatient mental health. As somebody who has been 51/50 several times in my life and who's doing very well thanks to the help of therapists and life coaches, I can speak personally about how vital, how essential, how, what a priority inpatient mental health is. I cannot, I cannot put a value to the amount of importance it is. It is essential. Please reconsider that, please. Secondly, substance abuse recovery. Why is that? I can't understand. It's because of substance abuse and lack of support from the community that my cousin's behind bars, okay? He, he didn't have the right community to support him. Despite my family's efforts, he got into the wrong hands. He slipped between the cracks because his teachers couldn't catch him. They were too busy, okay? His parole officer had too much on their plate too. Substance abuse. He's looking for medicine. He found medicine in drugs. I wish he could have found medicine through love and support, you know?
Thank you. With that, I'm going to bring it back to the board. And so, for me, one thing I wanted to share is I saw that line, but I want to make sure the community knows that while it's not funded through Esperanza care, it is widely funded. You know, in Monterey County, we've put a lot more funding into behavioral health, mental health. We have a lot more access, including the new Sun Street Substance Abuse Center that we helped get behind that grant that brought all that money down, about $10 million, to redo the facility in King City to actually have that in our community rather than having to send people out of our community to receive services. And so, I know it's one of those, a lot of folks missed last week, but we said goodbye to Amy Miller, who was the doctor for 14 years that helped run our behavioral health program. And we talked about how she closed the equity gap for those communities receiving Medi-Cal and bringing closure to that. It was a huge swing. While that sounds like just a few words that don't mean much together, when you look at where it was when she came on board 14 years ago, that was about an 11% swing in terms of serving the communities that need it most. And so, I do believe this board is investing in that. And I don't want it to seem that just because it's not on this slide, it's not something that we care about and are finding other ways to fund through the county budget. But with that, those are my comments. I see Supervisor Alejo has his hand up. Supervisor Alejo.
I just wanted to echo the same, that there's other county programs that provide extensive services to the community, although this particular Esperanza care program is limited. But I always like reminding the community that Monterey County is a leader in this area to extend healthcare, although limited in this particular program, but it is.
Louis, I think you got muted there in the middle. Unless your internet cut out. Are we losing? No, he's there. Supervisor Alejo?
He's going to accuse you of muting him.
And I'm going to say that he went to the John Philip School of Zoom again. Careful. All right, Supervisor Alejo, we'll come back to you. I think you're having a microphone issue. We're going to go to Supervisor Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, on the question of mental health, I think the public has raised important issues. And I appreciate the responses that you, Mr. Chair, and that Supervisor Alejo were making, emphasizing the importance that our county has put on mental health and substance use recovery. And Dr. Gray may want to say something too, but my, or maybe I'll just invite him to, because my sense is that, as it relates to mental health, there has been a concerted effort in the last several years to include mental health professionals as part of the primary care setting. So, and one of the roles of Esperanza care was actually to be more preventive, to allow people to have access to the kinds of, you know, body medical care, but also mind and emotional health care that would help them address things in the early stages before it got to, say, an inpatient situation and to help. Anyway, that was my impression. And maybe Dr. Gray wants to talk a little bit about how that gets integrated into the, the primary care setting.
I'm certainly happy to comment, Supervisor. So, mild to moderate mental health issues are dealt with in the, in the primary care setting. So, certainly folks who have, whose, whose conditions fall in that mild-to-moderate class are currently receiving services in the primary care setting. I think my other comment, even though this, the slide that I've shared several times lists excluded services, none, patients are not denied access to these services. And I think that's, that's a, I think that's an important distinction to make for, for the public. Except, for example, if you come to our emergency department and need inpatient mental health, you will, you will get access to inpatient mental health. Same thing with inpatient hospital services, surgery services. Keep in mind that traditionally, we've been able to qualify folks for emergency Medi-Cal if they have an urgent surgical need or something like that. So, that's why we chose not to fund a certain array of services that really have an alternative funding source and really focused on what we consider to be the core outpatient services that actually promote longitudinal health.
Thank you, Dr. Gray, and thank you for offering, you know, making sure that this stays available to the community, even though sometimes we feel like 3,500 people isn't enough. And I know there are many more people who could be served. But what, what you and the Health Department clinics are doing is really significant, and I appreciate it very much.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Gray, for all that you're doing. Okay, so with that, see no additional hands from the board. I'm going to go ahead and recess us to lunch. We will reconvene at 1:30 on the balance of our public agenda items. Thank you all, and enjoy the break.